First item as we return to the special meeting of the board is to rise and report from committee of the whole, and I would like to rise and report on the item on the committee of the whole dealing with principal and vice principal appointments. If we could now stand, rise for the national anthem and acknowledgement of traditional lands, and please turn off your cameras during the anthem and acknowledgement. Thank you.
We would like to acknowledge
that we are here today on the traditional territory
of the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
Nous sommes sur le territoire traditionnel des Mississaugas de la première nation de Credit.
Oh Canada, home and native land. True ancient love in all of us common. Car ton grâce éportait le pays, il s'éportait la croix. Ton histoire est une époque des plus brillants espoirs. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
We are now on item number five of the agenda. Approval of the agenda, approved the agenda for this evening. I have no conflict of interest to declare. And we are now on item number seven, which is the staff reports for the 2021-2022 budget. I am pleased to introduce Colleen Russell Rollins, Director of Education, and Jaspal Gill, Associate Director, Operations and Equity of Access, to present the Peel District School Board's 2021-22 Proposed Balanced Budget. This budget supports and centers student learning and well-being in the next phases of the pandemic recovery. It continues the ongoing implementation of the ministerial directives, it continues the modernization of operations, and it reflects the Peel District School Board's commitment to student achievement, anti-black African Afro-Caribbean racism, anti-Islamophobia, equity, anti-oppression, and well-being initiatives for staff, students, families, and community. The COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on our staff, students, and families, and across the Peel District School Board, and it has required adjustments and adaptations for all of us. This budget process was no exception. As a result of the pandemic, the Peel District School Board has experienced enrollment decreases. This has resulted in various funding impacts which have been mitigated through temporary grants provided by the Ministry of Education. The Peel District School Board's consultation process was modified and included critical feedback from staff, parents' guardians, employee group leaders, school administrators, the senior leadership team, and trustees. Priority was placed on maintaining services delivered by frontline staff and supporting our most vulnerable and/or underserved students. The 2021-22 budget demonstrates fiscal responsibility by ensuring funds directly support the important and critical work of staff who today and every day continue to make a positive difference in the lives of Peel Board students. I am indeed very proud of the final product. Thank you Director Russell Rollins, Associate Director Gill, and those involved in shaping, developing, and refining the Peel District School Board's 2021-22 budget. Now I would like to turn it over to Director Russell Rollins for an overview. Director Russell Rollins.
Good evening, and thank you very much Supervisor Rodriguez. We are pleased to present the Peel District School Board's 2021-2022 Proposed Balanced Budget at tonight's special meeting of the board. The budget totals $1.979 billion and $198,001. As mentioned by Supervisor Rodriguez, the budget is student-focused and supports and centers student learning and well-being. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, enrollment decreases have resulted in various funding impacts for our board. The Ministry of Education recognizes these impacts and has provided support to mitigate them through temporary grants such as the recent immigrant supplement, mental health supports, and additional student technology funding. These grants have helped to mitigate the overall changes to the 2021-2022 PDSB funding envelope. Additionally, increased funding for centrally negotiated labor commitments has translated to minimal overall change to funding, with revenues increasing from approximately one from 1.97 billion to 1.98 billion. The 2021-2022 budget was developed through a modified consultation process, as you have mentioned, due to the ongoing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Peel District School Board's consultation sought input from and feedback on the proposed budget from employee group leaders, school administrators, the senior leadership team, and trustees. PDSB staff, parents and guardians, school council members, students, and community members were also invited to participate in an online survey. The information gathered through the consultation process and data collected from the survey were used to inform PDSB's budget priorities for the upcoming year. This year, the Peel District School Board prioritized maintenance of services delivered by our frontline staff and supporting our most vulnerable and underserved students in order to maximize the impact of these funds despite budgetary constraints. This focus combined with our consultation processes and a review of the ministry directives led us to identify the following ongoing and one-time enhancements in the 2021-22 budget: The addition of 26 inclusion coaches, 26 child and youth workers, 75 long-term occasional teaching assistants to support students with special education needs, an additional vice principal, two resource teachers to work with students who identify as Indigenous, three additional literacy resource teachers, an expansion of two additional staff in our Human Rights Office, two additional student advisor and community engagement staff to support students who identify as Indigenous, funding to support the Black Student Success Strategy and professional learning, an additional community engagement consultant, funding to support science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics STEAM, and hybrid learning software resources, funding to support training for managers, supervisors, and principals, one additional human resources project integration lead to establish a centralized applicant tracking and file management system, funding for maintenance supplies and services and utilities increases for new spaces and inflationary increases, eight additional new maintenance vehicles, funding to support maintenance and operation of ventilation systems to maintain air quality, funding to support remote technology needs for staff, additional funding to cover student transportation cost increases. The Peel District School Board's operating budget is focused on program delivery. As a result, staff are asking for approval of an additional $5.48 million from reserves to support one-time business cases that primarily support students with special education needs and transportation cost increases. I want to recognize and thank everyone for the leadership that went into preparing this budget, specifically our finance support services team for their diligence and expertise in creating this year's budget book, as well as acknowledging PDSB senior team, trustees, staff, students, families, and community members for contributing to the development of this proposed budget. I now welcome Jaspal Gill, Associate Director, Operations and Equity of Access, to present the proposed 21-22 school budget for the Peel District School Board in detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Director Russell Rollins and Supervisor Rodriguez. Good evening, everyone. Before I start with my presentation, I want to acknowledge the commitment and leadership of the senior team to develop this proposed budget. I would also like to thank Controller Altesia Charles and our finance staff for their outstanding work over the last four months in the development of the budget. Next slide, please. For school boards, enrollment is a key driver for staffing, determining accommodation needs, and most of the ministry funding is based on enrollment, normally referred to as average daily enrollment or ADE. The graph shows that over the last 12 years, our board has experienced enrollment growth except in 2015-16 school year. The huge jump in enrollment in 2014-15 year is due to the fact that all full-day kindergarten students were included in ADE calculations as full-time students and were fully funded as part of the Grants Per Student Needs funding. For 2021-22 school year, enrollment projections indicate that the elementary panel will see a decline of 2,872 students and the secondary panel growth of 500 students. Overall, our system will see a decline of 2,372 students compared to last year's estimates, which represents a 1.5% decline. Next slide, please. Each year, ministry introduces changes to the funding it provides to school boards. So some of the specific changes being implemented for next year include: Overall, provincially, the Grants Per Student Needs funding is projected to be 25.6 billion. That's an increase of 2.2% from this school year. Per people funding will increase by increase to $12,686, which is an increase of $152. 1% salary increase and benefit funding to reflect the central labor agreements with various employee groups. Ministry will continue to provide student support funds for additional staffing to support the local learning needs of students. All funds to be used consistent with central agreement obligations. Next slide, please. Due to the extraordinary and temporary decline in recent immigrant enrollment as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and closed borders, ministry will provide mitigation funding to supplement the recent immigrant component of the English as second language, English literacy allocation, English literacy development allocation. Our board's allocation is approximately 7.2 million as part of this funding. Ministry will provide a new student technology device per people amount $7.11 for all students in kindergarten to grade 12 as part of the People Foundation grant to replace devices that may be out of date and to support the procurement of additional devices. Ministry will also provide additional funding to support student mental health, to foster the continued learning and well-being of students. This year, ministry provided funding of 49 cents per people amount for educational software license as part of the GSNs. This funding will increase to 48 cents per people amount next year. To streamline funding, some of the existing priorities and partnership funding allocations will be transferred into the GSN in this school year. There will also be a 2% increase to the non-staff portion of the school operations allocation to assist school boards in managing the increase in commodity prices such as hydro, natural gas, and so on. Next slide, please. Ministry will also continue with the implementation of multi-year changes it introduced in previous years. Benefit benchmarks will be further reduced due to the phase-out of the retirement curries. Ministry will continue with the phasing of updates to school facility operations that are new grant to reflect a secondary class size of 23. In regards to capital investments, ministry will continue to provide additional facilities in new funding as part of the school conditions improvement grant. Our board's share next year will be 46.3 million. In addition, the board will also receive 21.6 million in annual school renewal allocation next year. Next slide, please. Based on the consultation with trustees, senior administration, and the input received from various unions, federations, school councils, and the public, staff has developed a proposed balanced budget. Given funding constraints, priority was placed on maintaining services delivered by frontline staff, supporting our most vulnerable and underserved students, and the ongoing implementation of the ministerial directives. Next three slides highlight some of the enhancements included in the proposed budget. To accommodate the enrollment growth in secondary panel, the proposed budget includes 28 additional classroom teachers and one additional vice principal for the secondary panel. The proposed budget also includes 26 inclusion coaches to support classroom teams in programming effectively for all students kindergarten to age 21. 26 child and youth workers to help students leverage their strengths within the school and classroom settings as well as to promote mental health and well-being. It includes additional 75 teaching assistants to support students with special needs, two source teachers to assist First Nations, Métis, and Inuit students, and to provide ongoing school embedded support to teachers as well as DAs with First Nations, Métis, and Inuit community groups, agencies, and organizations to enhance and support school and community communication and partnership. This proposed budget also includes two student advisory community engagement staff to work with their source teacher to support Indigenous students. The proposed budget also includes 400,000 set aside within the budget to support professional learning designed to provide an implementation plan for the capacity building of school teams and central administration to identify and eliminate the systemic inequities and school-based barriers which negatively impact the experiences of Black, Indigenous, and racialized students. The proposed budget also includes a community engagement consultant to support this board. Next slide, please. The proposed budget also includes a team of three literacy resource teacher to support destreaming as well as to develop our sources and to provide supports to educators to help mitigate the impact on literacy development for students due to the pandemic. 430,000 set aside to support software licenses for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, as well as hybrid learning. The proposed budget also includes two additional human rights officers to support the Human Rights Commission's office, including the managing and overseeing of human rights complaints and formal investigations. 60,000 set aside to provide ongoing training to newly appointed business managers, supervisors, and vice principals to assist them in developing the skills to successfully address issues and manage relationships in a unionized environment. A human sources project lead to establish a centralized applicant tracking and file management system for all hiring, promotion, and acting appointments. Additional funding for the HR area to support an employee relations partner and a human sources information system liaison officer to manage workload for the 21-22 year. Next slide, please. The budget, the proposed budget also includes additional funding for supplies and services in the facilities area, utility increases, as well as to purchase a new maintenance vehicles. The budget also includes funding in the amount of over 2 million to continue to support and maintain the enhanced air quality measures and filtration system that have been implemented in schools for staff and students. There are additional funding to cover student transportation cost increases due to increase in service contracts and temporary transportation to holding schools. Funding to support Peel Learning Foundation to cover staffing costs as per the agreement between the board and the foundation. Next slide, please. There exist some potential budget risks for the 21-22 school year. Our board's enrollment depends on new families moving into this region from outside the country and from other parts of Canada. Since last March, there is low immigration and very few families are moving. This could have a further negative impact on our enrollment. Also, there could be less fee-paying international students in Peel. But there could also be the possibility of some families deciding to keep their children at home due to the pandemic. Addition to that, depending upon the pandemic situation and health and safety measures imposed by Peel Health and the Ministry of Education, there could be additional costs due to enhanced cleaning, student transportation, remote learning, staff absence coverage, and other associated costs. So far, the ministry has provided our board with approximately $28 million allocation to cover COVID-related expenses next year. There is a possibility that all of our costs may not be fully covered by the ministry funding. Next slide, please. Our board, along with many other boards in the province, continues to experience a funding shortfall in the area of special education. This slide shows the funding gap for the last five years. In 21-22, the funding gap is projected to increase to approximately 23 million as the needs for special education students continues to grow. Next slide, please. So if we look at our operating expenditures by area, approximately 81% are directly related to school expenditures. 3.9% are related to central support for schools, 8.2% related to facilities, 3.2% related to student transportation, and 4% related to administration. Next slide, please. Now if we look at our operating expenditure by type of expenditure, over 82% of the expenditures are related to staff salaries and benefit cost. 11.3% are related to non-staffing, staffing costs, 1.3% related to interest charges on long-term capital debt, and 4% related to amortization of our capital assets. Next slide, please. Looking further into staffing costs, approximately 68% are related to teachers, 10.9% to teaching assistants and early childhood educators, 4.4% to principals and vice principals, 2.5% related to school office post staff, 2.9% to PSSB staff, 6.1% related to custodial and maintenance staff, 1.9% to continuing education staff, and 4.4% related to trustees, board administration, directors, superiors, and transportation staff. Next slide, please. Looking further into non-staffing costs, 2.9% of the costs are related to student transportation, 1.6% to facilities maintenance, another 1.4% related to school supplies, 0.5% related to technology, 1.5% to utilities costs, 0.5% related to administration, and another 0.9% of the costs are related to school generated funds. Next slide, please. So this slide compares per people funding of large urban boards. Our board's per people amount will increase to $10,336 next year. So that's an increase of $84 over this year. So thank you Chair, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you Associate Director Gill for the presentation and for the support from Controller Altesia Charles as well, and thank you Director Russell Rollins. I'll now ask the trustees if they have any questions about the proposed 2021-2022 budget. Okay, the first question is from Trustee McDonald, Kathy McDonald. It was mentioned that the agreement that was signed between the Peel Learning Foundation and the board, for transparency, is this agreement with the corporate board or the board of trustees?
Thank you Supervisor Rodriguez. So just to provide some background to the board, a draft agreement was shared with the board at the incoming meeting on October 10, 2019. So subsequent to that, the meeting, in that meeting, there was questions of clarification on the agreement, and then subsequent to that meeting, the agreement was signed by the previous director of education on behalf of the board. It's a corporate board. So as part of that, this agreement, the board is responsible for the salary of the executive officer of Peel Learning Foundation. It is a five-year agreement. However, either party has the right to change or cancel the agreement with at least six months' written notice, but it is an agreement between the corporation and the Peel Learning
Thank you Associate Director Gill. Are there any other questions about the budget from the trustees? We have a question from Trustee McDonald, Brad McDonald. I don't have a question, but the following comment. I would like to extend my support for this budget that has many additions that will directly touch our student from teaching assistants and child and youth care workers and continuing our work on equity and anti-racism with inclusion coaches, resource teachers, and so much more. Certainly, I would have appreciated more, but this is a great step for our students with our tight budget constraints. Finally, I want to thank our great staff for all their hard work in developing the budget with special thanks to Associate Director Gill and your great team. Thank you Trustee McDonald. Other comments or questions for Associate Director Gill and his team or Director Russell While we're waiting for some questions, Associate Director Gill, I just want to take you back to slide nine. I just want to take you back to slide nine for a moment in terms of the potential budget risks for 2021-22. Based on your analysis of the potential budget risks and your team's analysis, the enrollment decline was due to COVID-19. Do we anticipate any greater decline in terms of your demographic data that has been collected that might, in fact, skew the budget to any significant degree that might not be able to meet our, meet the needs that have been presented this evening?
Through you, Supervisor Rodriguez, there is still a possibility that, that some families, due to the pandemic situation and depending upon what the pandemic situation may look like comes, come September, they may still choose to keep their children at home. I, I believe that is, is one of the risks in there. But what, the, the way we can mitigate that risk is that, that each year, in the, the first week in, at the end of the first week in September, we do calculate our on-the-ground enrollment. And then based on that, that actual enrollment, there is a reorganization usually later in, 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 in September. So that will allow us to, to, and, and through the reorganization, based on the actual enrollment, we should, we will be able to adjust any staffing levels. So that, 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 that should allow the board to mitigate any, any risks, a majority of the risks that, that there may be because of the enrollment decline.
Thank you, Associate Director Gill. A question from trustee Marchand. When can the board expect the next update in terms of possible enrollment changes and, and funding changes?
Through you, Supervisor Rodriguez. So as I mentioned, that we, we do collect our elementary enrollment at the end of the first week in September, and the secondary enrollment usually, I, I believe, at the second week in, in, in September. And then, then at the next board meeting, we do provide the, the board an update on, on enrollment and, and, and any impacts of that, that changes in the enrollment.
Thank you, Supervisor Rodriguez. If I may also address one of the questions that has been posed?
Sure. Go ahead, Director Russell Rollins.
Thank you very much. One of the additional risks that we may face is with regards to the distribution of families who choose virtual learning versus in-person learning. So depending on how those classes are formed, particularly at the elementary level, there may be additional staffing costs that go beyond the additional grant funding provided by the Ministry of Education.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Trustee Green is also expressing many thanks and appreciation to Associate Director Gill and his team. Trustee Benjamin has a question. Can you clarify when you say enrollment has declined? Does it mean that students are not in school? And if this is legal in Canada?
Through you, Supervisor Rodriguez. What I meant by enrollment decline is we, we do have a projection of our enrollment, and that's what we do each year. In fact, all school boards in Ontario do the enrollment projections. And then, then in September, when we actually calculate our actual enrollment and based on the actual enrollment, either there is a, either, either enrollment is either gone down or up. So, so if the enrollment has gone down, we, we normally have a decline in there. And there may be many, many reasons for the enrollment decline or, or enrollment increase. And one of the factors could be that the families may choose to move out of our region and then go into other areas in, in, in the province or, or just because of the pandemic, and we have seen that, that last year. Especially for our junior kindergarten students, that families simply decided to, to keep their, their children at home rather than sending into the, the junior kindergarten and probably waited a year to, to send them back. So, so, so I, I believe that families have that option if, if they choose to do that.
Thank you, Associate Director Gill. Again, trustee Benjamin expresses her thanks as well to the team. And I'm sure each of the trustees also expressed their thanks. Trustee Decrube also expresses many thanks from her, grateful for the focus on equity and student success that is clearly evident in this budget. Thank you, Associate Director Gill. Thank you also from trustee Belbeer. Sorry, trustee Sohe, I should say, my, my, my mistake. I just want to go back to the, to the risks as well, Associate Director Gill. On the, the second risk in terms of the decline in international students due to travel and visa restrictions. In the past, the, the funds that were gathered from the international students, could you provide some clarity as to where those funds went? And with the decline, will those funds not be able to go to those places? And is there money coming from other sources to support what, in fact, those funds originally supported?
So through you, Supervisor Rodriguez, for international students, I mean, they're those, I just want, I mean, they are fee-paying, paying students and not, not covered by the ministry funding. In fact, starting last year, the ministry is starting to clawback 1,300 student, $1,300 per each student of international student that the school boards have. So, so they'll continue with, with the clawback. But in regards to the fees that we still collect, number one, we, we do have additional staff that, that we need to, to provide education to those students. We treat those students regarding staffing the same way as we treat our, our other students. So, so there is additional staffing costs that, that, that we use these fees to pay for that. And if there are any funds left over, and normally there are, and those funds will go normally into, to the bottom line of, of, of our overall revenue. And as I mentioned, in my presentation, in Spec Ed, we are almost $23 million over. So, so those funds do come from other areas where we either have leftover funds or we, or we have some underspending in those areas. So we do use those funds to provide additional funding for areas like special education, where we have a deficit, and also transportation and student transportation. We currently have a deficit of almost $8 million. So those are, those are the funds that we take from other areas and then, then use those funds for those, for areas like Spec Ed and student transportation.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Associate Director Gill. Question from trustee Marchand. What is the cutoff for international students to enroll for the 2021-22 school year? And if pandemic restrictions allow for greater travel?
Through you, Supervisor Rodriguez. I mean, I, I think their, their cutoff is the same as our, as our students here in, in Canada. We will, we, we continue to communicate with those students. The good news is, some of those students, they, they will register with us as our students, but they continue to learn from, from while they are in China. I'm just using as an example of, so where they are in their own country, they stay in their own country and they continue to be our student and learning through online, taking courses, and so, so that's a good news, that some of those students are, are deciding to do that. But as far as, as far as the time stick timelines, we continue to communicate with, with, with those students and to see if they are able to, to come or if they will, will, will still join us as students from, from their own country or, or they decide to postpone. But there's no stick timelines.
Thank you. Then this is my final question, Associate Director Gill. On your last slide, you speak about the comparison to large urban boards, noticing that Toronto per student is, the differential is at about 676 and then places like Ottawa and Thames Valley. Is there a reason for such a discrepancy between our board and theirs?
Through you, Supervisor Rodriguez. I would say the ministry funding, I'm just talking overall funding, the grants, the way they work, they do have, they do have, the formulas are based on meeting sort of the need, general needs of all students in the province. But then in addition to that, they, they do take into account the, the local factors that, that, and, and they do compensate the boards with the local factors. And I believe one of the areas where we continue to have challenge and, and, and the reason that, that we continue to see less per people funding as compared to some of the other boards is, is the use of up-to-date census data. Like for example, the, the, the local opportunities grant. The big portion of the local opportunity grant is, is, is to meet the, the local needs, but it is still based on 2006 census data. And as we know, Peel has, there's a huge change in, in, in demographics in Peel since 2006. And, and we continue to, to, to work with ministry, continue to advise them to update, use and operate the demographics data and, and we, but, but those are some of the challenges or the reasons why we as a board receive less per people funding as compared to other boards, along with, with the local conditions or situations that, that the ministry factor in in providing the funding.
Thank you, Associate Director Gill. From trustee Sohe, travel is scheduled to open in July. Do we have enough staff in the welcome center knowing that the influx of students will be high? In regular times, we process those applications in March.
Through you, Supervisor Rodriguez, I would say yes. We do continue to monitor the workload in, in our, in our centers. And if there's a need to provide additional sources, we usually provide some temporary assistance and, and, and we do have that in, in the months of July and August. So depending upon the volume in those centers, we will provide them additional sources if they need.
Thank you. Those are all my questions and seeing none others. I just want to move to the, oh, sorry. Thank you from trustee Sohe as well. Just want to move to the proposed budget motion. I want to make sure that the trustees are involved in a consensus decision this evening as well. So it's going to try and facilitate that and hopefully it kind of makes some sense. So prior to reading out the motion, I want to ask if any trustees have any other questions about this budget? Just want to give you another opportunity to make sure that we are all on board. Thank you, trustees. Do any trustee have any serious concerns about this budget passing this evening? Is there anything in this budget that really causes, who gives you pause to think, I'm really concerned here and there's a huge risk of passing this, this budget? Seeing none, I'm seeking consensus from the trustees on this budget. Can I assume that I have consensus from all trustees on the operating expense budget, the capital budget, the transfer from board appropriated reserves to balance the budget, and the one-time use of the uncommitted working fund reserve? If you could please kind of indicate via the chat if we've got consensus on moving that forward?
No.
No? Who said no?
Trustee Crocker.
Trustee Crocker, could you give us some sense of your concern, please?
I can do that, yes?
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
I'm hearing a lot of noise. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah. I don't know where the noise is coming from, but I can hear you, yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. The budget does not pass with my consent, so I, I don't think it matters if this year is lost. All motions of the Peel Board require only the approval of the supervisor.
Correct.
Trustees were elected by constituents to represent their interests. My constituents have made it clear that they do not favor the hybrid learning model. Had I the ability, i.e. had trustees been in their seats, I would have moved a resolution that the 2021-22 budget reflect a rejection of the hybrid learning model by any name. Furthermore, I remain unsatisfied with the responses I received in the last trustee information session, particularly around the extra funds allocated centrally. Had any candidates gone door-to-door or on social media in the last election saying, "Vote for me and take more money out of the classroom to put into the director's office," they surely would never have been elected. I believe I see here more funding not only for human resources in the Indigenous Studies line, but also for learning materials and institutional approval. And if that is the case, then I am thankful. Overall, however, if I had a vote, which I do not, I would not cast it in favor of this budget. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, trustee Crocker. Really appreciate the comments. Okay, so seeing the, the one serious concern in terms of trustee Crocker, other than that, I've seen all yeses. So given, given that and given my role, I'm not sure if either the director or the associate director wants to respond at this point?
Yes, through you, Supervisor Rodriguez. Just as a point of clarity and certainly would welcome Associate Director Gill or Controller Alatashi Charles to speak to this further. The increases to the director's office that were referenced earlier are predominantly to add two additional human rights staff to the Human Rights Commissioners Office. This is in direct response to the Ministry of Education's review of the Peel District School Board in March 2020. The overall staffing for senior team, the total full-time number of staff remains the same, although positions have changed. There has been minimal increase to allow those changes. Those changes were presented to board in October based on an Ernst &amp; Young report, and details can be referenced there. With regards to the community learning model used at the secondary level, this was after serious and ongoing consideration and consultation with a variety of stakeholders. The model was developed to meet Peel Public Health's guidance and approvals as well as the expectations outlined in the Ministry of Education's memo to Directors of Education. Thank you very much, Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Director Russell Rollins. Alrighty, so given all of that and the input that we've received this evening, be it resolved that the total consolidated operating expense budget for 2021-2022 of $1,979,198,001 be approved and that the total capital budget for 2021-2022 of $108,764,717 be approved and that in order to balance the 2021-2022 operating budget, the transfer of $1,425,951 from board-approved appropriated reserves be approved. And finally, that $7,814,224 from the uncommitted working fund reserve be approved to support long-term occasional teaching assistance one-time, ministry directive expenditures, student transportation, and other board priorities that are one-time in nature. So all of those will be approved tonight by me. Thank you to everyone. Thank you to Director Russell Rollins. Thank you to A.D. Gill. Thank you to Controller Altisia Charles and all of your teams for all the great work in bringing this balanced budget forward this evening. Having said that, this meeting is now adjourned. Everyone have a great evening. Thanks to all.